Good evening, everyone. The meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk’s office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated January 8th, 2018, which is properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. The city has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Fox.
Here.
Mr. Gould.
Here.
Ms. Little.
Here.
Ms. McTiernan.
Here.
Ms. Ogden.
Here.
President and I do.
Here. Okay. I’d like to call on Chief Weck to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its motherland, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
A closed session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and read broadcasts on Thursdays and Saturdays on Hometown TV, Comcast 36, and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk’s office at rlicatice@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to prevent all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Now, on to minutes for approval. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of regular enclosed session of February 21, 2018? I move to approve.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? We’re on to going to our reports. Let me just say something before we hear from our mayor and city administrator. The governor announced a state of emergency due to the impending storm effective at 8:00 p.m. tonight. And so, we’re going to try to endeavor to go through the meeting in some relatively quick order in order to be in compliance with the governor’s state of emergency declaration. In order to have shortened a little bit of the meeting, and if people are following at home, there are certain things that we’re not going to be doing tonight that we had otherwise planned to do. Specifically, we are not having the fire chief’s awards. These were awards that were in recognition of folks who helped out with the December 31, 2017 fire, and I believe that has been rescheduled for April 3rd. And we appreciate the fact that the folks who were going to be honored were accommodating of the change in schedule. In addition, we are going to have two presentations. One presentation from the mayor’s partnership for the public arts. As folks will know, we and council this year are having different committees and boards come in. This was going to be the second of our series. The previous one was the Environmental Commission. We are still going to figure out a date for the mayor’s committee. It’s probably either going to be the March 20th or the April 3rd date, but depending on their availability. And we appreciate their cooperation as well. Finally, the Department of Community Services was going to make a presentation of their software that deals with the online permit tracking system. Again, as folks who are following this know, we and council, in the prior council, had approved putting electronic information about permitting so that people can track it, like you can track your pizza delivery. And we’re going to have a presentation of that since this program went live at the beginning of this year. Again, in the interest of time, we have postponed that, and that presentation is, will be held on April 3rd. So, I appreciate everybody’s cooperation in moving some of this stuff, but we want everybody to be safe when we’re leaving from here. And with that, I will turn it over to our madam mayor for her report. Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council President. Good evening, everyone. For everyone who’s been suffering without having power, we are thinking about you. We are sorry. We have been working hard with JCPN-L, putting pressure on them to provide restoration of power. Currently, power is still out for approximately 37 to 40 households. They hope to get them all done. They’re starting in the morning, and hopefully everything will be done first by tomorrow. They can restore power during the snow, during a snowstorm, but what they cannot do is put line workers in the buckets in the air if it’s more than 35 to 40 miles an hour winds. Those who do not have power at the moment, you will not be moved to the bottom of the list if power is, other people have power outages tomorrow or the next day. You will stay at the top of the list, and with the only exception being that if there is an outage upstream in a substation or in a main transformer, then that would have to be fixed in order to, you know, effectuate power into the individual homes. If you’re in need of sheltering assistance, please call the Office of Emergency Management at 908-273-1033. JCPN-L is offering free water and ice to customers remaining out of service. If you go to the cityofsummit.org website, you can get information on where you can get that free water and ice. It’s in local grocery stores.
277-1033.
277-1033. I apologize. Thank you, Chief. With the second winter storm coming within one week, it is more important than ever to sign up for emergency and general notifications from the City of Summit, and you can do so by going to the cityofsummit.org/news. This way, you don’t have to search the website, or Facebook, or all these other places. The information by email can come directly to you. And you could sign up for the areas you’re interested in. You may not want to get emails about recycling. You can get them just about emergencies. The Broad Street West Redevelopment Public Workshop has been moved to Monday, March 19th because of the winter storm. The workshop is being held from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. at St. Teresa of Avila Memorial Hall, which is located at 303 Morris Avenue. I encourage my fellow residents and members of the business community to attend and to share your thoughts on the improvements to the area. Go to cityofsummit.org/redevelopment for information on the public workshop and to submit feedback online. Deadline for applications for the Summit Hometown Heroes Program is March 31st. This program will recognize local veterans with banners posted from Memorial Day to July 4th. The program is funded through private donations with no fee to participate. If you would like to participate or make a donation, information is available on our city website, cityofsummit.org. Also on the website is information on the Lewis Bay Scholarship for High School Juniors and Seniors. The deadline for that application is March 8th. And last, but certainly not least, the 31st Annual Taste of Summit to benefit the Summit Historical Society will take place on March 18th from 6:00 to 8:30 at the Grand Summit Hotel. And to everyone watching at home and who is here, be safe tomorrow, take care of yourselves, and check on your neighbors who might be elderly. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now, on to our city administrator, Michael Rogers. Michael?
Thank you, Council President, and good evening, everyone. I’ll just start with some important operational news. Tomorrow, all city offices will be closed, which is tomorrow, Wednesday, March 7th, except for essential personnel. So, I’m respectfully urging the general public, by all means possible, please stay off city streets to allow emergency vehicles to safely traverse, and DPW accrues the ability to effectively plow. Just give, make a few quick points about storm response stemming from last Friday’s nor'easter. First, I would like to thank all city personnel, specifically or especially the police, fire, and DPW workers for their great work during and after the storm. The fire department responded to well over 50 calls from the beginning of the storm through the weekend. As you would expect, most calls were for down wires, trees, and electrical power emergencies. Since Friday, the city communication office has been providing frequent updates and information from JCPN-L pertaining to outages and restoration efforts. During the last several days, the emergency operations center was open, and phone lines at the firehouse were staffed as well. Many residents used these emergency lines for general information purposes and shelter questions. No shelters in the city were set up, but some residents in need of assistance were directed to the Summit Hotel, who provided rooms at a discounted rate, so we’re grateful for that. On to community service matter. Due to expected inclement weather tomorrow into Thursday, recycling is rescheduled for Friday, March 9th. Trash pickup will begin tomorrow morning at 4:00 a.m. and will continue until conditions prohibit safe collection. It will resume on Thursday and continue each day through Saturday until all household trash is collected. Now, I’m just going to be a messenger on this next one. Morris Avenue Bridge update. City engineer met with the project management team to discuss permanent relocation of the city’s sewer force main on the bridge. This will take place the first week of April, with remaining utility, road approach, and sidewalk work to take place shortly thereafter. Unfortunately, the project management team also informed the city that the current schedule of project completion is now late May. Reasons for this completion delay from April to May, utility movement complications, and in the city engineer’s assessment, the inability of the contractor to get New Jersey Transit to authorize track outages overnight for various reasons stated. So, I will leave it at that. Finance, just update, next, the next council meeting, March 20th. I will present the 2018 municipal budget to the council and public. It’s going to be awesome, so don’t miss it.
I’ll see TV.
Finally, the Summit PAL and Department of Community Programs are hosting Summit’s annual egg hunt at 1:00 p.m. on March 24th. Over 10,000 eggs will be hidden on the village green. There will be three separate egg hunts organized by age, toddler to age eight. The Tri-Can Egg Hunt for young people with special needs is scheduled for March 11th at 3:00 p.m. with a rain date of March 18th. That’s all I have for this evening, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I know that the frustration of the bridge that everyone has to share with every single member here of council and the mayor, believe you me, if we could do it ourselves, we would and get the darn thing done. So, it is undoubtedly frustrating, but I know also that the city has been in touch, as well as the mayor, in pushing and pushing, trying to get this done as quickly as possible. And so, it isn’t as if for the lack of attention on our part. We have certainly kept pushing them for this, but hopefully, this will be the last of an endless series of delays in this process and get this darn bridge completed. Secondly, I want to just point out, as the mayor noted, there’s also, I know, frustration about the folks who have lost power and have been waiting for days on end to get it restored again. I know that the mayor has been diligently on top, and we thank her for her efforts in doing that, of being in touch with JCPN-L. And I know that many members of council have posted on respective pages and so forth of keeping the public informed, but obviously, the city also has its own mechanism for trying to keep people informed, and to the degree that people can join those systems, it will help them get that information as quickly as we know them as well. And with that, let me just note that we’re not going to have also Summit Historical Minute tonight, and we appreciate the fact that that was rescheduled. So, moving on, we have ceremonial awards. The first is the mayor’s proclamation dealing with the American Red Cross Month. American Red Cross, as any disaster we know, is the place, the entity that people go to to look for help, and we thank them for all their efforts. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We want to delay this until March 20th or April. So, I see the executive director, Kristi Haddish, here. And Kristi, would you come up, please bring everyone else who, both you, is it Blair Good? Is that who’s here? Sam, how are you, Sam? Okay. So, whereas the American Red Cross saw a record-breaking year in 2017 of challenging domestic and international response efforts, and whereas through the support of its volunteers, in just 45 days, the Red Cross responded to six of the largest and most complex disasters of 2017, including back-to-back hurricanes, the deadliest week of wildfires in California history, and the horrific mass shooting in Las Vegas. And whereas the Red Cross responded to nearly 50,000 home fires in 2017, providing casework assistance to help 76,000 families recover, and has a long history of helping our neighbors in need. And whereas the American Red Cross New Jersey region responded to more than 820 local disasters last year, assisting nearly 1,900 New Jersey families who were displaced by home fire, and they installed 10,600 free smoke alarms and reached thousands with fire safety information through the Home Fire Campaign. And whereas in New Jersey, the Red Cross provides an average of 4,000 military family case services every year, and collects an average of 90,000 units of blood from our very generous blood donors. And whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank the Red Cross volunteers and donors who give of their time and resources to help the members of our community. And whereas the Red Cross depends on these local heroes to deliver help and hope during a disaster, and applauds our heroes in New Jersey who give of themselves to assist their neighbors when they need a helping hand. And whereas according, across the country and around the world, the American Red Cross responds to disasters, big and small, and collects about 40% of the nation’s blood supply, provides 24-hour support to military members, veterans, and their families, teaches millions life-saving skills such as lifeguarding and CPA, and through its Restoring Family Links Program, connects family members separated by crisis, conflict, or migration. And whereas we dedicate the month of March to all those who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies, and acknowledge that our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission. Now, therefore, I, Nora Rades, Mayor of the City of Summit, to hereby proclaim the month of March 2018 as American Red Cross Month in the City of Summit, and I urge our citizens to give of your time, blood, and money to make a difference, and I encourage all Americans to support this noble humanitarian mission. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this sixth day of March in the year 2018. Thank you. (applause)
I’m going to move very quickly, but I’d also like you all to meet Sam and hear a little bit about what he does. We had an amazing fall, as the mayor touched on, but I think it probably all came to light on New Year’s Day when this community responded so well to a really huge fire right here in the City of Summit. And if you all don’t know, our relationship depends on the call to action from the fire department or the OEM. And if they hadn’t called, and we hadn’t had such a wonderful relationship that we have, our four volunteers who had put themselves on call that day wouldn’t be able to come so quickly. So, I just want to say, that is a true testament to how fantastic a community pulls together and really shows that all these little moving parts really lead to recovery for those residents very quickly. Especially, thank you to the committed pig who let us come in and do our casework and fed everybody, and to the YMCA who took that wonderful job of collecting all the bountiful gifts that people brought afterwards, whether we could use them or not, they took a big step in being again a partner for the Red Cross. So, thank you all very, very much. Here’s Sam.
Hi, everyone. I’m a freshman at Chatham High School, and I’ve been a part of the Red Cross for probably about a year or so now, and I work in the blood services. And speaking of blood services, it’s very important, only about 20 of the nation, 20% of the nation gives blood. And actually, this Saturday, March 10th, from 8:30 to 2:30, the New Jersey Devils will be hosting one of the largest blood drives, their second annual. So, I, everyone should give, and it would be great to have everyone down there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, now, it’s our moment in the agenda for public comments. At this point, we ask for members of the public who want to talk about any issues that are not topics on tonight’s business agenda to come forward and speak at the microphone. If you have written comments, we ask that you give a copy to our clerk, if you have a copy available, and we ask that if you could take about three minutes or so. So, are there any folks, please, if you could state your name and your address? Appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council president, and members of the council. My name is Phil. Last name is Cologne, C-O-L-O-N. I live at 21 Gloucester Road in Summit, New Jersey, with my wife Angela and our two kids, Stella, who’s seven, and Samuel, who is five. We moved to Summit three, about three years ago for three reasons: for schools, for a safe environment to raise our kids, and for a community, or a sense of community. The recent tragedies that have happened in Florida, in Parkland, has kind of brought those things to full attention for our parents, including myself and Carol, that’s here too, who will actually speak to that as well. We want to get a sense of what is the plan, and I know the chief is here, and he’ll talk a little bit about that. What are some things that are we doing differently in our schools to make sure that they’re protected? I’d never thought in a thousand years that I’d be having this conversation in front of the council about safety and summit in our schools. I notified our superintendent of schools via email on February 27th, asking him the question, are there going to be any new procedures that are we going to be undertaking in our schools to ensure that we have safety in our schools? As if today, I have not received a response back. That’s what bad looks like. This is what good looks like. So, council person, council member Fox was copied on that email, so was the chief. I heard back from them within minutes with a response. That’s the type of leadership that we expect from our officials, either on a council member purpose, perspective, or in terms of our schools and the superintendent. We want to hear more of those types of leadership. We want those people that are elected and those people that are holding office to be accountable to parents. When the parent talks to you or asks you questions about safety in schools after the tragedy in Parkland, we expect an immediate answer. So, I commend the chief for bringing attention to it, and for council member Fox for bringing attention to it as well. The question that I have is for the chief and also for the council. Chief, we want to find out a little bit more about what are the plans to fortify our schools, whether that’s something that we’re going to start to think about doing. I know the whole idea of SROs are something that is being talked about. So, is there a specific SRO that’s going to be assigned to the schools? My kids go to Franklin and to the YMCA Learning Circle. Are there going to be new procedures in place in addition to Alice? In terms of relocation of assets and resources, from time to time, I drive through Summit because I have the luxury of working from home from time to time, and I can’t help to see sometimes, you know, law enforcement guarding grown men in construction sites. And I wonder if there’s an opportunity that we can reassign those law enforcement officers to our schools, be it outside, in front of the school, by a parking lot, somewhere there’s a presence, and if we have an auxiliary force that can then be assigned to construction sites and things of that sort, I just feel like there’s a better use of that personnel where it really matters. And then, outside of that, just really kind of understanding from you, Madam Mayor, what are we going to do as a community to galvanize? I know there’s certain unofficial things that are going to be happening on March 14th. Parents are anxious to be active, and I think it’s a great thing to galvanize a community. But I feel like this is a great opportunity for leadership to let parents know that there’s a reassurance of safety, that we’re thinking about this day in and day out, and that we’re taking the appropriate steps to always make sure that we’re on the front lines of this and being proactive versus being reactive. And so, those are my comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. I know that as a father who has two kids in the public schools, I too, I’m very much concerned about safety. I know everyone here on the dais is concerned about safety. It is paramount in all of our minds. I can say that without any doubt. But what I would ask is before the chief responds to some of your questions, and since they were, or the mayor, if there’s someone else who wants to talk about also the same issue, so we can hear it at one time, and then maybe we can just have some responses, anyone else on the issue, first on this, and then we’ll still have public comments on any other issues that people may want to have. Absolutely. Thank you. And if people could just speak a little louder, also, just the acoustics. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Dr. Carol Pak Tang. I live at 234 Summit Avenue. So, I too, so my daughter is six, and she’s a first grader at Lincoln Hubbard. I have a four-year-old at the Learning Circle, and I am helping the, with incongru, with other parents, we have about one representative, core representative, at each of the elementary schools. We are organizing the elementary school walkout. We do understand that this was talked about at the level of the Board of Education, and they are, what they’ve said or in responses is that, you know, the elementary students are too young to participate in the school walkout. I would disagree. My six-year-old, she’s very aware. After they did the Alice drills at school, she came home and told me about them, and there were significant concerns. The other preschools around the town are also doing drills. I know that the Cornerstone did a drill. I know JCC did a drill, and children are coming home, and they’re scared, and they’re asking their parents, you know, why are we doing this? What is this about? They’re curious. The elementary students, they’re smart kids. It’s different these days. They know that there is something going on, and so, our main goal in having a school walkout for the elementary students is to first and foremost, just show them that we care about their safety, that they too have a voice, and to really empower them. And so, that is our main goal. I know many, since I’ve been emailing parents individually and talking to parents individually, there are a lot of fears, because I think a lot of parents don’t know, I’m an emergency doctor. I do emergency for a living. I love it. But, and I talk about very difficult situations with parents, with children, and that’s my job. But many of these parents are coming to me, and they’re scared. They don’t know how to talk to their children. They want to participate, but they don’t know what we’re going to present. We want to ensure to parents that we are very aware of the sensitivity of this topic. And ultimately, at the event, we would also like to provide resources to parents about how specifically to talk to elementary and younger children about the recent events. One of the main things that we are, so so far officially online, we’ve gotten 60 RSVPs, or sorry, 30 official RSVPs, but those are only the parents that are RSVPing. We’re encouraging people to RSVP with their child’s number and their own, so we really have a good sense of the number of individuals that will be involved in walking out and getting together. Originally, the other parents, where we were organizing individual small gatherings at each of the elementary schools, I think that we’ve talked and we said, you know, it would be better if we all got together. So, the plan is to sign the children out right before 10:00 a.m. from their individual elementary schools and gather in one spot. So, that’s really what we are hoping, that’s why I came to the meeting, is that we’re hoping that we can have a safe venue, and that we’re hoping that it, since the numbers are so big, that we can have some kind of security as well, because other parents have reached out to me and said, I would really like to participate, however, I’m concerned about the safety issue. And so, I would like to do it if you can let me know what the safety issue is. The actual agenda is still being framed by the main organizers. Like I said, our main goal is to provide the students a voice and to empower them and to really help the elementary students process whatever they may be hearing. to really help the elementary students process whatever they may be hearing or be scared about, and help the parents really process, how do I contextualize this for my elementary And so mainly, we need a venue, and we need some kind of security, because we're, the numbers are already getting quite big. And I suspect, and that's only just from word of mouth. So that's our main two concerns, so. And I'm happy to, you know, answer any questions about what we've done so far, or any concerns. We also don't want to, we also want to let the parents know that this is happening at the schools that may not want to participate, because I think that many students getting signed out from each of the schools are going to bring up questions even for those families that don't want to participate. So how do we address that as well and be sensitive to those families? And we totally are respective, respectful of those families that do not want to participate or have their children necessarily hear too much from our event. Thank you.
Let me just also just say, make sure that people understand, right? So we're the Summit City Council, but we're not the school board.
Yes.
Right. And the way that we are designed in this town, and what folks have always liked, is the fact that we keep the school board and what their activities are and what their decisions and policies are, not to be a political decision. And so this is why it's separate from us. And so to the extent that the school board decides that it wants to have only certain grades involved, that is their considerate decision, and it's not for us to second guess their decision, because it's their prerogative and their, just so, just so people who are listening to this debate and may not understand, okay, are we stepping in the shoes, we do not do that. We don't step in the shoes of the school.
Yeah, so we're basically here asking for a venue and asking for safety and security.
Absolutely, understood. Sure. No, please, just come up to the mic so people can hear, otherwise you can't hear.
Does this governing body have any oversight to the Board of Education?
The way that we have is that there is a council liaison to the school board, and then there is a school board of estimate, which is the board that decides on the budget process, and there's two members of council that sit on that board, as well as the mayor, and two members of the school board sit on that budget committee, the school board of estimate, and they decide the overall budget for the school. That's how.
That's the extent of the oversight.
Okay, does anybody else have any comments of the school? Yes, please.
Hi, I'm Dr. Federah Juice, scientist, not medical. I live on 77 Ashwood, so I'm right up the street from Jefferson. My oldest child is in grade one, and like Carol, I debated whether to talk about, you know, the recent event in Florida, but she overheard news, and it was downhill from there. So I felt propelled into action, and I initiated the walkout for Jefferson. I initially had it labeled as Jefferson walkout, but as has already been indicated, the school council has indicated that elementary schools will not be participating. So we've opened up the event to elementary school children, no names of any schools, and so far I have 24 RSVPs for the event. As Carol has said, it would be nice if we could have a communal venue for our event. There's five elementary schools that are participating in this at the moment. The event that I'm organizing is set to take place in the parking lot, the pool parking lot near Jefferson. But from a security standpoint, and also from a representation standpoint, I feel that having one communal venue would be more impacting. After all, this is about making a statement of empowerment, you know? We need to change the laws. I think this is universally recognized for all parents here. Doesn't mean we're taking away people's guns, it just means let's be more responsible about how we implement those laws. And I personally feel that I'd like to empower my child. I don't want her to go to school scared. I want her to feel like she's on the brink of change, and that she's part of that change. And that's why I feel like we need to do this. So we can have the town support on this matter in whatever way, shape, or form, that would be great.
Thank you. Any other folks that want to speak on this issue?
Anybody talk now?
No, wait, hold on a second. Let me get the police chief.
I'm hard to hear.
Okay, sorry, I'll scream. Chief, do you want to come up and try to address some of these issues, please?
First of all, thank you for coming. Excuse my back, because I'm going to talk this way, so present through you. So I'm going to kind of break it down a little bit to the questions that you had with, for the school, and then I'll talk about the walkout and things to that. So once Columbine happened, and I believe that you saw the video from the last council meeting where I spoke about a lot of the things that we've done, the schools have really been very proactive in a sense. They added through construction locked vestibules where you couldn't just walk into the school, you have to then get buzzed in various checkpoints from outside and inside. As you know, we have directed patrols where the officers are going through the schools every day. We have, through the council, we now have long guns in the cars, we have heavy-duty vests in the car, we have Kevlar helmets in the cars. Officers have additional magazines and things like that with medical kits on them that they can bring in as well. And then you mentioned the Alice training, which we've done, Summit was one of the first schools, to give other options other than just lockdown, standing, you know, sitting in a corner, so different options of leaving, things like that. We've been very proactive with the school over the years since Columbine, and even before that, we have a very good relationship. We train in the schools. A lot of towns do not allow that, so our officers are learning the layouts all the time. To the officers that you see on the side of the road, they are off-duty. They are not paid by the city. They are paid by the public service. So that's, when they're off-duty, they can sign up for that, so we can't take them off of that, and then, because we're not assigning them to that. That's a separate entity, and we can't just put auxiliary there for that reason. The other one, as I mentioned last time, it was a testament, I think, to the police department, to the city, and to the Board of Ed. After Florida, I only received three emails. One just had a question, and the other two were praising, or acknowledging, I should say, is probably a better word, acknowledging the Summit Police Department and the Board of Ed for how proactive we've been with safety initiatives, whether it's training, equipment, construction, things like that. And as we continue to do it, we don't have SROs per se in every school. I'll be the first to admit, I'm not a huge fan of an SRO, because usually it's just for the high school, and I'm a father of two, and who are now in college, but if they went elementary and then there was an SRO just being put in the high school, I would have a problem with that. Because if you're going to do, for one, as my kids said when they were little, if Kelly got something, Ryan got something, same, same, right? So it would be the same thing that, you know, we have nine public schools that we would then have to put in. And unfortunately, there's been active shooter at schools where there were all SROs. Columbine had two. They actually exchanged gunfire, and that didn't stop it. We've had a lot of discussions about fortifying the schools and, you know, whether it's not right to say that after 9/11, you know, people still flew, and after Colorado, still went to movies. There were a lot of talks about just really kind of fortifying the schools, and I mean, you still have recess, and there's been discussions where they still go out and play, I don't need a firearm to cause havoc. And then there's been discussions about just driving across recess, which we've now seen on other places in New York, on the bike lanes and things like that. So it is a fine line. And as I mentioned last week, I hate to say it, but it's a reality. Through the training, the equipment, the construction, it is to minimize, God forbid, it does come, we hope that we never have to use any of our training or anything that we have, but our job is to minimize casualties, and that is through training and other vendors. We are in discussion, the high school has cameras. We have been in discussion with them, where then we could access them if there was an alert, and not like a Big Brother where we're watching every day. And now, since that initial discussion, it has become law. If you have cameras, you have to share them with, we have a dispatch center in Summit, I mean, New Providence, which actually oversees New Providence, Milburn, and Summit. We're in discussions with, same with the middle school, if they can have cameras, and maybe that's going to be a capital, but that's a Board of Ed, that's a Board of Ed program, and that we will gladly work with them. We have security meetings pretty often about all different things that we're doing, and that what we still can do, different things. Another thing that we did that was very small is after, we came up with an idea of putting the numbers in on the outside of every window, every classroom, as well as inside, because a teacher may bring a group of children into a classroom that is not theirs, and then if they are, have a cell phone and they're asking, where are you, there can be some confusion. So now, if they are sheltering in place in a room, they can look up and see 127. They can then tell the police dispatcher, whomever, I'm in 127. We have a map showing exactly, and then on the outside, there's also 127. So that was just a minor thing, it was a cost, but that again, is just the little things that, you know, make a team stronger. So for that part, and we continue to work with the Board of Ed, and we'll continue to work with community leaders, and I'm happy to meet with you whenever, and we can further discuss things like that. Because obviously, I can, I know I can speak for the mayor and council, student safety and the teacher's safety, visitor's safety, that's paramount. That's our top priority. I go to sleep every night. March 14th, I'm going to be up, because I'm going to be really, really worried, where I'm thrilled that the students, the high school students, the middle school students, their voices are being heard, but to me, as I spoke with a parent, I said, I have a different view of that. To me, that's a target-rich environment, where not everyone's going to think the same way their students are thinking, and they may take that time to prove their point. So I will be happy when March 14th is over. And so with that, with the walkout, as the president said, that's a BOE thing, but I can talk, that parent that I spoke with yesterday, I said it was a little selfish, that the parents, because she told me just the parents wanted to meet at the green. And I said, you know what, I understand that you want to support the students, I do think it's a little selfish. The mayor was asked to speak, I was asked to speak at the high school, we both declined, because then it would become a little bit about, well, the chief said about guns, the mayor said about guns, and it would take a little bit away from the students. We want their, this is their, they have it in their hands, I'd like to see them be able to run with it. So having other events, whether it's at the green, I mean, I can't tell anybody that they can't congregate on the green. We're going to be very thin, because we're going to have the middle school and the high school, we're going to be doing some security things there that I'm not going to discuss, because like I said, that's my top priority, is making sure their students are safe. And I think they should have their day. And that's just me, as a father, if my children are going to get involved in it, I wouldn't want to do something the same time and want to bring attention to myself, because it's their voice. Let them kind of have it. It's really been uprising, and I'm probably preaching a little from the soapbox, but I do like what I'm seeing from the students. And you're right, we all want to empower our children, but if we're doing the same thing, we're kind of pulling away from it a little bit. So that's my point on that. I'm not going to be able to give security, it's not going to be a venture, you know, it's not a planned thing, the city's not endorsing it, I mean, that I know of. And my main concerns are going to be for the middle school and the high school right now. We're not NYPD, we don't have 30,000 officers, we have to do with what we have. We're already calling in some officers to, for both locations. My suggestion to the parent that I spoke with, maybe you have it a different day, right? So then it does two things. One, it allows the middle and high school students to have their day and their voice, and then it also keeps it in the public eye, because if it's a month later, it's not going away. Because if everybody has everything on March 14th, as we all know, after Sandy Hook, there are tragedies, Vegas, it kind of, the next thing comes along and it's kind of forgotten a little bit. So that's not a bad thing to have it a different day. And then, you know, we can plan accordingly, whether it's a property use, and, you know, the officers are brought out, it's a different story. So I hope I answered a little bit of what was asked, and like I said, I'm always open to further discussions, whether it's at a PTO meeting, whether it's in my office or what have you, but obviously, the safety of everyone that visits, lives, and works in Summit is my main concern.
Thank you, chief.
I just wanted to, oh no, just to comment that the chief and the schools did not start thinking about safety in the schools after Parkland. I mean, this has been something that's been going on for years and years, and it evolves, it grows. There are many examples of there being SROs in a school building, and there's still tragedy occurs. I think the fact that our officers are every day in a building, walking through the entire building, getting to know it, and all the officers on patrol get to know all the buildings, is very valuable, and has been taken on as a model for many other cities and towns in our area. I have to say that I understand how important it is to empower our children and to have them feel part, and not be afraid, and feel part of what's going on in the community. But I am concerned about the security issue, and I know that our police have already committed to both the middle school and high school, and I don't think I'm going to sleep much that night either. But I don't know that having this walkout at the elementary, for elementary school-age students has to happen that day, or has to happen at all, frankly, in order to make them feel safe. I mean, it is the most important job of all parents to make their children feel safe, and there are lots of ways to do that, without taking away from or causing more concern for security issues if this is done on that day. That's just my opinion. But I do want to reiterate that we have put a lot of time, energy, and thought in planning, careful planning and training into school safety, and it hasn't just come up in the last, you know, year. So that was my only comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. So I'm Matt Gould, I'm chairman of the Public Safety Committee, so I'm fortunate to work with the fire chief and police chief. And I will say a few things. One, our police department is one of the best I've ever seen, not only in New Jersey but in the whole country, and the fire department, and they, just to, you know, echo what the mayor said, they have been taking this seriously for a long time, and I think one of the strengths of the way that they deal with school safety is the fact that there is no single routine person that's just stationed in the school, where someone could observe what they're doing like that. Another thing, you know, we live in one of the safest states in terms of gun violence prevention in the nation, in New Jersey, which I'm pleased about. It could be a lot better, and I would just say that the thing that it needs most, in my opinion, is persistence and allowed voice, and to direct that voice to our elected officials. So that's, you know, Congressman Leonard Lance, that's Senators Booker and Menendez, and Governor Murphy, and you should be hitting them every single day, they do respond to that. And there's a lot of groups that have been put together that are working on that. And then last point, and I'm sorry to go on, I do have three daughters in the public school district, one at the middle school, one at the high school, one at Washington School. I'm, I really am delighted that the students are leading the charge on this, and not the parents, and not the police, as Chief Wex said, and I'm thankful that they'll be keeping them safe while they're doing it, but I just would like to let them have it be their day. Thank you.
I'm just going to, excuse me, Neri Ogden Ward II, Councilwoman, and I'm just going to put my teacher hat on, because I am a second-grade teacher. And I know that in my class, and I think that I can speak for most lower-school teachers, your children are paramount importance. And we've been trained, and we work with the police departments in all of our schools, and we, those students are our care for eight hours a day. And so I would encourage you, from a teacher, work with the Board of Ed, work with the teachers in the school, and come up with something maybe, and I agree, their voices are important, but another very important piece is, for eight hours a day, learning and that, and feeling safe is top priority. And so coming up collectively, working with the teachers, working with the principals of your various elementary schools, in a way that they could do something within the school might be a possibility, but, you know, I applaud your desire to speak for your children and have your children's voices heard, but please know that your teachers care, I mean, their safety is top priority, top priority.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else want?
I'm sorry, I just failed to mention, thank you for coming to, you know, thank you for caring and for coming and bringing this up as well.
So let me just, I'll just say a couple of things.
So let me just, I'll just say a couple of things. One is, I agree that we thank you for coming out here. We know this is a concern, not just for the folks who came out tonight, but I know there's lots of people in the community. This is an issue for and concern about what's going on with safety and so forth. Obviously, as I said before, it's all of our concerns. Lots of us have kids in the schools ourselves, and so we think about it day and night as well, believe you me. I have one who's in an elementary school, and I have one in the middle school. And so he'll be walking out on the 14th, and I'll be going, okay, I hope everything's okay. But that brings us to two things. One is, I think we should all recognize, and we thank the police chief and all the folks in his department for all the hard work that they do, and the folks who are involved in safety, the mayor, so forth, that, you know, we all believe in transparency, but there's things that are done in this particular realm that cannot be transparent. And no matter how much we want to share with the public, there's stuff that we shouldn't share, because for the obvious reasons that, while we want to share and get information out, there are people, some people who want to listen to that information and take it in a very twisted way, and take it as a challenge for what they want to show that they can possibly do. So I am always, I'm a big fan of transparency.
I don't know what that means.
Really? You don't know what that means?
Every time he says that.
You can't make that up.
But, nice little light note there. But obviously, you know, we all appreciate, I think, that we can share some stuff. And the second thing is, of course, finite resources, right? And people can't be everywhere. And if we have events that are sanctioned, that are expected, and are planned for, we have to maneuver our resources to cover those things, and make sure that those people are doing what we said, hey, look, we're gonna allow you to do this. We want them to be safe. And so folks want to do something else. And this reminds me of two different things, right? So after Charlottesville, people wanted to get together and make a statement about what the kind of community we live in. And we had a candlelight vigil down the church, the Interfaith Council organized, and the entire community, I brought my kids to it. And so there is, there's no reason why people can't think of organizing something that is not just simply elementary school kids, or middle school, or high school, but everybody in the community that wants to be involved. And then if that's well planned out, then of course, then, you know, you get a city permit, then we have police, and then it's organized, and we can deal with it in that fashion. So I would ask you to consider whether that's an option. And then, second is, there's already planned marches, I think on March 24th, if I remember correctly, like nationwide. And so to the extent people want to get their kids involved in that process, that's another venue. But I think, right now, we have a dead date coming up. These things get planned in advance, need to be scheduled and organized in advance, and so we have only so many resources to deal with. So I hope you guys understand what we're trying to say, okay? Let me open up, we still have public comment period? So now, public comments on things not dealing with the schools, but something else that anybody has a public comment on.
You, sir.
Come on up to the mic.
Look at this bag, so I don't get arrested, all right?
See something, say something, okay?
Okay.
Try it though.
Now, my name's Phil Ryan. I live on 18 Mount Vernon Avenue. I grew up in this town, where the firehouse is now, is the Public Works. 1948, they started building, it was the Public Works, okay? So now we got a sewer problem, sanitary sewer. And this town is very bad on it. Very bad. This gentleman here, right here, I'm pointing that at you. I'm pointing to you. I'm, excuse me, you said that, okay. I can't point, okay. Now, I went up to this gentleman, in 1993, they came down to my house, and they told me I needed curbing. So I put the curbing, I says, I'll put the curbing in, if you put the curbing all the way to the summit dumps to the bridge. And the guy says, yes, we will. A redhead kid, worked for the engineering department. So the guy, it was 1993, I hurt my back, we'll say in 96, I retired from the job. They never finished it, they never finished it, because they were dumping sanitary sewer into the river, into the river, and they're still doing it. Now, if this guy, I can't point, but I like to go after somebody, but that's the way I am. But I'll take a lie detector test on everything I say here tonight, and will this guy take one with me? Oh, I can't point again. But I don't, why don't you stand right here, Paul, so I can see you. Look at your eyes.
No, sir.
You have to address the council.
I mean, hey, I'm a little excited here. This started in, this didn't just start, it started in 1949. Forty-nine, down to summit dumps. I'm pointing again, the summit dumps. They ran this pipe across from Constantine Place to the tin shed on the right, not the one where you put the garbage, right? Over here. And I saw that opened up five times, that valve, opened up five times, but I didn't know where it went. We were working on the High Line poles on the outside. I worked for the power company. So that's, of course, five different times in maybe 15, 20 years. We'll say in the late 90s, or early 90s and 80s, we'll say. So these guys are, I never knew where it went. So I retired, we'll say in 98 or 96, I retired, 98 to 99, I was riding up the dumps on a rainy day on a Friday afternoon. I come out, and the water was coming down the street, going straight down the street, going down, it turned, and went down into that pond, or across, down into the pipe, the pipe down there, and went across the river, to the river, right? So all this stuff is coming down, right? So these guys all know it's coming down, and we're there, right? So then he turned it off, right? So I tell Paul, I says, hey, you got water coming from the front. I thought it was a fire hydrant up there, but it wasn't. I drove up the street and I turned around. So I told, so what's he do? He relocates it to the back. So Friday afternoon, Friday morning, I'm in the dumps, I'm watching the water come down this way, and I'm watching the water coming the other way. It looked like Budweiser Brewery. The form was so good, it was going down, right down the street, right? And they had it all covered up, right? But they just don't, now, what I want to put the curbing in here for is, because there's a manhole, say this is New Providence Road, say this is where the other manhole is here, and then there's a manhole on Mount Vernon Avenue, right there, right? So they come in, they open this valve up, they open the manhole up, and all this water comes down into my property, which a guy will say in the 1960s or 70s, when he bought the house, he come down, he worked for the city. He come down, he says, you keep your kids out of that backyard. Keep your kids out of that backyard, and keep other kids out, on rainy days, right? So on rainy days. So when, all this stuff is coming down. Now I got septic tank, I got the storm water coming, septic tanks, septic tank from the neighbor next door, they had a pipe there, they covered it up. I had it all undude. I was gonna bring, come up here to show him, but I didn't get up here in time. They covered it up on me. But now, all this stuff stops here. So this guy comes down, the superintendent of Public Works, he comes down, and he looks at this pipe, and down at the end of the street, there's a 30-inch pipe, and it don't go to this manhole here, it goes across the street. And I had the blonde, the other skinny guy who worked up in engineering, and him, come down. Five times, I didn't know where it went. But one thing about these guys, them guys that work for the city, these guys are mechanics. They didn't, but they didn't run the pipe right here. They ran the pipe across the street, so the water would go across the street, then straight to the river. So all this stuff, it was like an express going down. And this went on for years. So this guy come back, and he says to me, here's what you gotta do. He says, when, I says, when you retired, he used to come down and clean this pipe, all this area, all the way out, every day, every November and every April. So when he did it.
Mr. Ryan, if I could interrupt you for a second, because, as I said.
Wait a minute. Look, I'm a little excited. I've been excited for 40 years.
I understand that. Listen to me, just for, just one second, before you start again.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
Okay. Can you, okay, so here's what I'm gonna say. Okay, fine. Listen to me, okay. So what I'm trying to say is, this has been going on for 40 years, right? Okay. Can you focus on the, right now, what the issue is?
Right now, yes, I can do it right now.
Okay.
Okay.
If you could go back.
Okay, right now. There's no, there's no, there's no Belgium block on New Providence Road.
Okay.
And for 40 years, I've been, since 1993, we'll say, I've been here, five years, we're gonna have Belgium block. We never got Belgium block. So in 19, we'll say, 2002, Clark was the mayor. Twenty, he was the councilman in 2003. He was the mayor, councilman. Next year, he was the mayor. So he comes down to my house, he says, we're gonna put this temporary curbing in. Believe me, the guy who put that in, they should buy him a candy store, right? Because he didn't know what the hell he was doing. And he was one of his men, one of his bosses, right? And so here we are. This guy puts his, go down and look at it today. Go down and look at it. That couldn't keep nothing.
So your issue is that they have not properly put in the Belgium blocks on New Providence Avenue?
I want Belgium block. I want Belgium block in there, and I want you to stop the sanitary sewer from going all over this town, not just, not just down my streets, down in Brian's Pond, in Canoe Brook, or everywhere. This, hey, now, I was in Royal Field, that was a brook all the way down. They're pumping from Royal Field, they're doing work, they covered that all up. And when they went past Brayden School, they covered that up. They put a fence here, so nobody could get in there.
Okay. So let me, so those are the two things.
Yeah, wait a minute. Look, when I went to these guys, now, when I went to these pumping stations with the power company, the guy says, I'm gonna open the valve up. They had no power. This circuit was off, and this circuit was off, so they had no power. So they're gonna open the valves. They've been opening valves since 1955. Still open them up now. And this guy, now they got them running, they got them turned on a little bit, so so much goes down, goes down the river. Friday, they was turned on pretty good. So is there a valve over here?
Mr. Ryan, you have to address it to me.
Is there a valve in that tin shed up there?
Okay. So that's your question. Okay. Hold on. Mr. Ryan, why don't you take a seat? I'm gonna, Paul, come up. Mr. Ryan, take a seat, take a seat, and let me have him come up.
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay. Now.
That's Council President.
Hold on, Paul, before, okay. So first of all, right, yeah, why don't you sit, just sit.
Can I sit down?
Okay. Okay, let him speak, right? We're not gonna interrupt anybody. So one of the things, okay, okay. One of the things, at least in my professional capacity, I know, Mr. Ryan, why don't you listen to what I'm saying first, okay? Before you listen, listen to me for a minute, okay? In my professional capacity, I'm an environmental lawyer. So I have some idea of what happened historically with sanitary sewers and storm water. That's what I do for a living, okay? So there's a difference between today and what happened 30, 40, 50 years ago. 30, 40, 50 years ago, there was no Clean Water Act. As a result, you could go ahead and release directly through a drainpipe sanitary sewer into any river, okay? There's no prohibition. And you did that with, listen to me, just listen, that was the law. Yeah, I think you were ready to say something. So you could just go ahead and do that. It was not prohibited, okay? But now we have moved up to today. Now you have a couple of questions about what happens today. Paul, let me ask you the questions, okay? Does the city directly release sanitary sewer into a watershed like the Passaic River?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Now, that, now, there's something, wait, wait, hold on, hold on, please. Okay? Let me just, there's something that's separate. It's called stormwater. When we have a large rain event, okay, every municipality, as best as I know, unless we're somehow different, their capacity to hold water in tanks can't be done. Even New York City can't do it. You don't have enough large-sized tanks to do it. And so you have to be able to release it, otherwise those tanks would explode. Stormwater, right? Stormwater goes into watersheds, correct?
It does.
Okay. And that is permitted by law, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, last thing, and then we're gonna go on to the rest of our agenda, okay? Belgium blocks. That's very specific to history. What is, what's the issue with the Belgium blocks?
Mr. Ryan lives on Mount Vernon, which has Belgium block. Providence Avenue, there are sections in New Providence that do, and there are sections that don't. Providence Avenue was in, originally was in the 2017 capital, and it was moved out to 2019.
Okay. So in 2019, capital means that if the 2019 capital budget is approved, in 2020, it would be put in? Something like that?
More than likely, yes. So, and that would include drainage, milling, paving, curbing.
For New Providence Avenue?
New Providence Avenue.
Okay. So that means the road would be repaved?
That's correct.
And you would put in new Belgium blocks at that time?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. Paul, why don't you take a, okay, Mr. Ryan?
I'm out. Okay. Here's this thing from 1993. This is from 1993. You want to slide my ass off, really? Right? 1993.
Okay.
Okay.
What, okay.
Okay. On the way, it says 93. So I was up there this year, we'll say maybe two months ago, the guy told me I was gonna get it in 1980, right, which is now. I'm not getting it in 1980, I'm getting it in 1990. I got a better chance of being down St. Teresa Cemetery before this thing's over. Right?
Paul, do you know, I'm gonna ask you, I mean, do you have any, were you involved in this 1993? Were you involved at a point in time?
No.
Okay. And none of us on council, obviously, were involved. So I can't speak to what the decision-making was in 1993, Mr. Ryan. There's no way I can do that. And, but all I can tell you is, right now, where we have, we obviously have multiple roads that we look at, Department of Community Services comes to the council and says, these are the priority roads that they want to have for any particular year. We vote on the budget. Typically, on almost all the time, we usually approve the capital plan for the roads. We don't usually take roads out. And all I can tell you is what I'm hearing and telling you, what we're both hearing at the same time, it will be in the 2019 capital budget. Okay. That's where we are. Paul, please sit down.
That's where you are. Where am I at? I'm at the same spot I was 40 years ago, right? Okay. Now, I'm taking the mic again.
No, 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 Mr. Ryan. This is, no, we have to, it's a three-minute, it's supposed to be three minutes.
Sir, I respect you, and I want you to respect me.
I do.
But I'm gonna tell you something. Now, this guy, I'll go over and take a lie detector right now, what I ask, and I want him to go ahead.
Phil, Phil, take a breath, then relax.
Go ahead.
Take a breath. We're gonna end this, if I may through you.
Sure.
We're gonna end this. This isn't a forum. You said your side. The Council President spoke. Paul Casas spoke. Let's follow up, right, because we have other things to do, and then we'll come back to it, right? I know you've been waiting since 1918, as you said, 2018, 2019, really. So let's just call it a night. The council has the information that you gave them, and let them work on it, okay? You have my word, right?
I know you have my word. I respect that. I respect that. But I'm telling you, now, okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
I'm not, they say all fights are due, all, believe me. I'm the wrong guy.
I've known you for many years. I'm sure this is the end.
I'm half an Irish American. I serve my country.
Anybody else have any other public comments for tonight? Okay. With that, I'm gonna consider the public comment section closed. Okay. We're now moving on to ordinances for introduction. We have three of them to be introduced tonight. What that means is, the hearings will be held for these three ordinances on March 20th, which is the time, if people from the public want to have any comments on them, to come forward and make their comments. Okay. Madam Clerk, would you please read ordinance for hearing number one, which is financing personnel 5587?
Ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance, through this ordinance, the city summit would be allowed to increase the base amount of the municipal operating appropriations, which is the cap, by 3.5% instead of 2.5%, which is the, 2.5%, which is the cost of living adjustment for Um, which is the, two point five percent, which is the cost of living adjustment for this year, calendar year, two thousand eighteen. The purpose of the ordinance is to allow the city to bank the difference between the maximum allowable operating appropriations and the total general appropriations in this year's budget. These banked amounts can then be used within the next two years to increase the cap base and provides the city a cushion to allow for unseen, unforeseen expenses. So this isn't an actual increase to the budget, this is allowing us a bank, a cap bank between the allowable amounts that we would only use if there was some sort of extraordinary expense. So I'm asking the council to approve this ordinance for introduction tonight.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan?
Aye.
Ms. Ogden?
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye.
Okay, second, safety. Madam Clerk, would you please read ordinance for hearing for safety five 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 seven?
An ordinance to amend Chapter Two Administration, Article Seven Administrative Policies and Procedures to add a new section entitled two dash nine one, fees for rescue services provided by the fire department of the revised general ordinances of the City of Summit nineteen ninety-six.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
No. Motion.
Oh, oh, I mean, a motion.
Yep. I, I move to, uh...
Sorry.
I move to introduce this ordinance. Uh, this ordinance is, uh, a way for our fire department to recoup some of their expenses from insurance companies, uh, based on the different things they do. Uh, so for light rescue, for medium rescue, for heavy rescue, there's different sets of fees. Uh, the, the, there's, uh, this is a common practice in a lot of different municipalities. Uh, what will happen is, the fire department will have a person that works with the insurance companies to recoup the fees, could be a decent amount of money for Summit, and will allow the fire department to keep their, uh, equipment up to date and to replenish their stocks of things they use on rescues. So.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan?
Aye.
Ms. Ogden?
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye.
Okay, third, Law Committee, um, would you, uh, the ordinance, uh, would you please read the ordinance for, uh, five six zero one?
An ordinance to amend Chapter Two Administration of the Code, Section two dash four three Rent Commission, subsection two, two dash four three point three, Appointment of Members, Term and Subsection two dash four three point four, Election of Chairman.
Councilman McTiernan.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, this ordinance, uh, seeks to amend the composition of the, uh, the rent commission. The rent commission was established to do a variety of things. One is to hold public meetings at regular intervals, to hear complaints, cases in landlord-tenant relationships. It also is, recommends metal, methods of settling each dispute, uh, to both the landlord and tenant, and maintain a record of cases heard and a final disposition for future precedents. And it has the power to subpoena landlords or tenants to appear in response to complaints with appropriate records where necessary. Also educates landlords and tenants in an awareness of the laws of the state of New Jersey and the City of Summit, which have been acted, enacted for their benefit. So, to be fair, it's an important, uh, commission. However, we've had a, a problem filling the commission. So this ordinance looks to revitalize the commission, uh, which, as I mentioned, can serve as a forum for tenants to air complaints against landlords. The, the ordinance, as presented, lowers the number of people on the commission from seven to five people, uh, specifically reducing, um, the, the landlord category from two to one, and the tenant category from two to one as well. Uh, importantly, it will reduce the quorum for the committee from four to three people. Uh, the purpose is to see with, with lesser numbers, would, would be possible to revive this important commission in a slimmed-down fashion, as it has been extremely difficult to find appointments for the prescribed members necessary to constitute the commission. And with that, I introduce this ordinance.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan?
Aye.
Ms. Ogden?
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Now we're up to the portion dealing with resolutions. Um, first up, finance and personnel. Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, Council President. Um, finance resolution number five five three five is to authorize transfer of appropriations in the operating budget. This is similar to several other resolutions that we've looked at in the first three months of the calendar year, which, um, transfers monies, um, in surplus, during, within the budget, um, areas that where we had a surplus to areas where we had a deficit. This one is primarily to cover, um, uh, deficit in the fire department over time, and I ask that council approve this resolution.
Second.
Uh, any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Any further discussion from members of council? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan?
Aye.
Ms. Ogden?
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye.
Second. Finance and Personnel, number two.
Thank you, Council President. Finance Resolution Number Two is number five five nine seven. This is a resolution to authorize the issuance of one million five hundred and eighty-eight thousand two hundred dollars in temporary notes for the City of Summit in the County of Union, New Jersey. This is to, um, fund a, um, school, uh, project, and this, these amounts are, will be refunded by the state under a rods grant, and that is expected to happen during this year, and at that time, this note would be repaid. I ask that the council approve this resolution.
Oh, second, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
Any, uh, comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public?
What's, what's the project?
Uh, uh, I don't know if we know specifically what... Does anybody know? Mr. Rogers?
Uh, I can't speak for what exactly took place during that phase of the project in schools, that would be a better question for, um, Lou Pepe, who is the Assistant Superintendent. Um, but this, they've been rehabilitating, uh, the school system for years, and there was a state grant that was, uh, awarded to Summit School System. So this is, uh, the funding mechanism, and, uh, eventually those monies will be, uh, received by the state, and the municipality will pay off, because we handle their debt.
Further, uh, any, any other questions from members of public? Any, any further discussion by members of council? Just so it's clear, essentially, I think what's been said before, we're basically advancing the money, uh, for a short period of time, and then we'll get repaid by the state, and, and, uh, so this way, taken care of. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan?
Aye.
Ms. Ogden?
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye.
Okay. Finance and Personnel, number three.
Thank you, Council President. Finance Resolution Number Three is number five five nine six. This is a resolution authorizing the issuance of not exceeding twenty-six million seven hundred and two thousand in bond anticipation notes. This is to fund the two thousand seventeen through two thousand eighteen budget, um, and I ask that council approve this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of public? Any further discussion?
David, uh, Council President? Yes, sir.
Yeah, just a quick clarification. Um, this is, the, the, what this is funding is not the overall, the operating budget, it's our capital budget.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So we don't, we don't deficit spend for operations. We, we appropriate money for capital. And, and one comment I, I will make, if, if people have followed the financial markets, for years, rolling these notes was effectively free, because interest rates were very, very low. That is not the case anymore. And, uh, we're gonna start to see this, uh, going forward, where, uh, the city had an ability to refund debt, et cetera, uh, take out cash. That window is closing, and I think it's important, and I know, uh, finance last year, uh, by Michael and Marge, worked very, very hard on a, a plan around the amount of debt we should have, and what was, it's appropriate, and this, uh, and I think particularly important in this environment, we are seeing interest rates begin to rise. We have to keep an eye on this.
Any other comments from members of council?
And I just wanna assure the public that the finance committee is continuing to work on this, and continuing to look at, um, different funding options, because we are aware of this as well, and looking, um, to do some more long-term budgeting, and we are working on that.
Any other comments from members of council?
Yeah, I would say I agree with both, uh, Councilman McTiernan and Councilwoman Little. Um, it is something that finance is taking seriously, and he's absolutely right. We're looking, have to look at the trend lines of, uh, the increasing in the rates, um, and it's something that we will look at, figuring out a plan, deal with it. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Gould?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. McTiernan?
Aye.
Ms. Ogden?
Aye.
President and I do.
Aye.
Okay. Finance and Personnel, number four, please.
Finance Resolution Number Four is number five six zero nine. This is to authorize execution of an employee separation agreement pending to our closed session, um, earlier tonight, and I ask that council authorize this resolution.
Second.
Comments from members of, uh, council? Comments from members of the public? Further discussion? Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you. Moving on, Buildings and Grounds.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, Resolution five four nine eight is to appoint electrical code, subcode official, Eric DeLezio. This resolution authorizes the reappointment of Eric DeLezio as an electrical subcode official for the city. Under the New Jersey Uniform Construction Code, subcode officials are appointed for an initial term of four years, and then must be reappointed by common council. Eric DeLezio was initially appointed on March thirty-first, twenty fourteen, and has conducted more than nine thousand electrical inspections during his initial four-year term. He has received outstanding reviews from the Summit Construction Official and the Director of the Department of Community Services. I would like to move this resolution.
Second. Thank you. Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Further discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you. Okay, moving on to Works. Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Council President and I do. Uh, Works Number One, ID fifty-five forty-nine, is to reject bids and authorize a readvertisement for the City Hall Stormwater Ejector Pump Replacement Project. Uh, this is to reject the two bids that Summit received to pull and replace the City Hall Stormwater Ejector Pumps. Uh, this project was a capital project that in nineteen, or in two thousand fifteen, we had a forecasted cost of forty thousand dollars. The two qualifying bids were significantly higher than that figure. We are re, uh, authorizing re-advertising of this project. The pumps that are being replaced are original equipment, uh, with one of the pumps already having been placed out of commission. Uh, we are in need of replacing both pumps so that, uh, basement doesn't get flooded. Uh, this base, this keeps the City Hall basement and garage from flooding. I move we accept this resolution.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Further discussion, members of council? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Mr. Bowman, number two?
Next one, yes. Uh, number two is, uh, Works fifty-five fifty, to award a bid for the alleyway improvement project for a hundred and five thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars and eleven cents. Uh, this is to award the bid to, uh, the alleyway improvement project, uh, which basically is the area behind us, that between the, the properties on some, or Springfield and DeForest, uh, between the parking lots at DeForest, uh, is to award it to AA Berms of Bellevue, uh, New Jersey. This will improve the alleyway, uh, as I just, in the area described. It's a pretty neat project, in that the road will be, is in dire need of repair, um, and has been patched work over the last several years. But what's neat about it is that we'll mill it down by two, two inches, resurface it, and in an attempt to make drivers and pedestrians aware of where they, each are gonna be, is we're gonna have a concrete pad, uh, on the...
The forest side?
The, the alleyway, uh, which will encourage pedestrians to walk on one side, uh, so that'll be a great opportunity of a heavily traveled area. Uh, so this was a project, was originally part of the two thousand sixteen capital budget. I move we accept this resolution.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Comments from members of council? Mr. Gould?
Thanks for this, Steve. I, I was just listening to a report about, um, New York City's Vision Zero Project, and one thing that they've said was, uh, you know, if you repave it, make it safer every time, and, and so I love that you're doing that, and thank you for that.
Credit the, uh, the Works Department that designed it.
Uh, any other comments from members of council? Mr. McTiernan?
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, um, appreciate Works, uh, getting to these alleys, because they are, you know,
This is to award the bid to the alleyway improvement project, which basically is the area behind us, that between the properties on Springfield and DeForest, between the parking lots at DeForest. It's to award it to AA Berms of Bellevue, New Jersey. This will improve the alleyway, as I just in the area described. It's a pretty neat project in that the road will be... Is in dire need of repair, and has been patchworked over the last several years. But what's neat about it is that we'll mill it down by two inches, resurface it, and in an attempt to make drivers and pedestrians aware of where they... Each are going to be is we're going to have a concrete pad on the...
The forest side?
The alleyway, which will encourage pedestrians to walk on one side. So that'll be a great opportunity of a heavily traveled area. So this was a project... Was originally part of the 2016 Capitol budget. I move we accept this resolution.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Comments from members of council? Mr. Gould?
Thanks for this, Steve. I was just listening to a report about New York City's Vision Zero Project, and one thing that they've said was, you know, if you repave it, make it safer every time. And so I love that you're doing that, and thank you for that.
Credit the Works Department that designed it.
Any other comments from members of council? Mr. McTiernan?
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I appreciate Works getting to these alleys because they are, you know, it's like they're downtown, they don't quite fit.
They're an eyesore.
Right? They're an eyesore. And this has been something that's been talked about for a long time, about beautifying these alleys, making them nicer. And I know there's been a bunch of plans and such, but certainly do something where they make them look a bit nicer. But as Councilman Gould mentioned, making them safer is a great thing, and a long time in coming. So I'm happy that this project is finally going to get going.
Any other comments from members of council? Members of the public? Any comments or questions? Any further discussion, members of council? I'll also echo what my colleagues have said. I think we sometimes forget, we look at the face of the buildings, but many people, the first time they're seeing, going into a building, is really through the parking lots on DeForest. And so... And then they go stepping through these alleyways that are pothole-ridden and doesn't look that great. I think it's also great that we do make it pedestrian-friendly and make it so this way people feel as if like, okay, we can traverse, not necessarily on busy streets, especially if you have kids or things like that. So it's really good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? No. Mr. Bowman, number three, please.
Okay, the last one I have tonight is 5042, which is to authorize a national cooperative purchase through the National Joint Powers Alliance for the purchase of a transfer station tractor for $145,746.99. This is authorizing the purchase of the transfer station tractor. This tractor that they're replacing is 11-year-old with over 223,000 miles as of November. This tractor is specially designed to transport waste from the transfer station to rawway. It has a 100-gallon hydraulic tanker to push the trash out of the dumpster.